Well, welcome to the Plumbton School Committee meeting for February 27th, 2023. I think this is the first meeting that we have had in person and filmed in three years, actually. So there we go. We're going to start the meeting with our public budget hearing. So we will open that up if anyone has any comments or questions with respect to budget. We can do that now. We will also be talking about the budget later on in the regular meeting.
Motion to close the public budget hearing.
In a second.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay. All right. So off to the regular agenda. We have Ms. Schofield, Ms. Passinen, and Mrs. Madeline here tonight. So thank you for joining us. We'll try and keep it somewhat entertaining, though I don't promise anything. And any items that you guys would like to bring up right now? You're just here for the ride. Okay. Did folks have a chance to take a look at the minutes from the last meeting?
Motion to accept the minutes from our January 23rd, 2023 meeting.
In a second.
One second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. All right. And then we now have two policies. Jason, you want to pick that away?
Yeah, so two policies. One has to do about access to our cameras, which are a web-based encrypted system that can allow access to it using security protocols. Basically, who's allowed to view our cameras and for what reasons, and what rights parents have to any of the footage on cameras, under which circumstances? I'm more than happy to read them because they're pretty heavy policies. Unless you've already had a chance to read through it. Basically, we're giving permission to any first responder to be able to access our security cameras in the building during the time of emergency. Be very careful to not put in Plumbton because the first responders could be from Mutro aid. We also want to make sure that the dispatch in Duxbury that covers the whole South Shore would be able to access the emergency cameras as well. This doesn't mean that the police department can use the cameras in our buildings for general surveillance purposes. They can be used by the administration to review incidences that have occurred. Again, parents can request to view this footage and can come into the school to look at it. And the faces will be blurred out of children to provide their protection of identity. The only time a parent can actually get a copy of the recordings is with a court order or a valid subpoena. So we're trying to protect the privacy of the students in school during the school day, but make sure that we also have the ability to see inside the building in case of emergencies. The other policy was in relationship to a conversation we had at a Union 31 Joint Committee meeting with Silver Lake. And this has to do with surveys being administered to students. And we spent the majority of our policy subcommittee meeting discussing the current policy and realizing how robust this current policy actually is for the rights of parents and the duty of the school to make sure that we're notifying parents of when these surveys are being given. We had a conversation between the difference between policy and procedure. And Ryan, you know, who generally sends these messages out, said that he would be more than happy to adapt his procedure, and we actually put it in here, that he's going to do basically hit all calls to parents as much as two weeks before the survey goes out, letting them know that the parent square is available with all the information of how to opt out, samples of the survey questions, you know, and basically just reaching up proactively to the parents that way. Again, we talked about opt-in versus opt-out. And generally, the opt-out has been an extremely low percentage of parents. And we had to balance out the need to get this information and data to fulfill some DESI requirements, the U.S. Department of Education requirements. We did check with Russ about this. And the suggestion was we go in the direction of an opt-out, but being more proactive in the messaging to parents about their rights to do so and what questions their kids might be asked. So that's the update to ILD. Any questions or concerns?
I don't have any.
No. So I would appreciate a motion to waive the actual reading of the two policies.
I'll move that. In a second.
One second.
In favor? Aye.
Thank you very much. So I make a motion to accept as our first read the updates to Policy ILD and to Policy -- where is it? There we go. The policy on the security camera access.
Which is EFACFG.
Yep. Down the bottom.
That's in the agenda.
In the agenda. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
No second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. School committee correspondence. We received some nice calendars from Senator Warren, so those have been distributed to the members. And that's all I had. Anything else at the office?
No.
All right. So on to new business. Pre-K and special education structure and discussion.
So earlier this year, we became aware of Silver Lake programs at the elementary school that have been in existence since, I think, as long ago as 2004?
Prior to that, too.
Okay, and even prior to that. The problem is, is that Silver Lake Regional Schools is a 7 through 12 district. It is not an elementary district. And so one of the things we will be doing to address this issue is we've spoken with the Department of Education, and they are giving us a year to correct the bigger problem. One of the first steps we must take, though, is first asking our towns to consider integrating the pre-K into our Silver Lake program. And that would allow us to put a whole grade level into Silver Lake.
Can I just stop for a sec? So just so that we -- so everyone's clear about what programs we're talking about. We're talking about the integrated preschool, which is pre-K. We are talking about sort of the in-district special ed programs that are K through six, primarily at Kingston.
Yes.
And we're also talking about certain support staff, right, within our building?
Yes.
For our special ed in-building program?
Yes.
Okay. So just so that we're -- I'll tell them what that is.
And so the next issue is that we have been operating as a savings to everyone involved as a district in that effort. But part of this restructure means that we're going to need to not structure it in a completely regionalized district way. We're going to have to either make these programs part of a school and tuition students in, which may require additional staffing for these programs, because they are a separate financial entity. And so one of the things that we'll be looking at is how to best restructure these programs. We can't make these programs part of Silver Lake as standalones. What you -- the only thing you could do as a regional district is take a whole grade level. You can't take programs and put them as part of Silver Lake. So that had come up as a question. Can't we just take these programs and make them part of Silver Lake? No, that's not possible. So we're going to look at how these programs are funded in the future. But there will be some cost increases to tuitions as we parse out staff that specifically works for these programs.
I think some other things that, you know, we'll need to think through, and one of the things that does come up, too, is that -- so I still don't fully understand why we can't pull a program out, but DESI says we can't. So I guess that means we can't unless we challenge them on it. But -- and of course, that's exactly what we're doing with the pre-K. So we're taking that whole program and putting it in -- basically, we're putting that into the regional agreement. And for the most part -- I've been corrected on this a few times. For the most part, it doesn't change anything that we're doing. We do have some support staff at Kingston Elementary that we should really be paying a shared cost piece because they are doing support for the students in that program because they're in their building. So principal, school nurse, things like that. There should be some element of that. For K through six, then, you know, the options are, do you put it into one of the buildings and therefore make the program, you know, part of one school? And then another option, which I think is a particularly difficult one, would be to fully regionalize the whole district. But that would mean taking -- that would not be just taking those programs. It would mean taking, like, all of the elementary schools would become part of Silver Lake, which means that you end up with a single school committee sort of overseeing everything. But that also means that the entire budget is a Silver Lake budget, and it's a budget that's controlled by three towns, not as cleanly as we have it here where we control our budget for Denny Ed. Halifax does it for their schools, and Kingston does it for theirs. So there's a lot more discussions to be had as we go through this process. But the first step will be to have an article on town meeting, town meeting, to be able to take care of pre-K. And that's what buys us an additional year of time in order to figure out what the other structure is. And then in addition to that, we have uncovered a number of other positions that, for whatever reason, were never truly put under shared cost. So when we look at our budget, the first part of the budget, you see that SC, that's a shared cost budget. That's running up to the typically the admin office and things like that. And so we have a certain number of positions that have been funded in whatever reason. And we need to figure that out as far as how we sort them out, because they're supporting K through six, and either they're not in the shared cost correctly. And then we even have some positions, like we have the curriculum coordinator, who is currently a Silver Lake employee, but the only work that she does is K to six. So that's going to be something else where we probably need to have her associated with a specific school and then share the cost. But in other words, we have a fair amount of accounting to do and a recommendation that we'll need to put together to figure all of that out. Hopefully, for at least those positions, it really just means moving money around in budgets. So some money will come out of Silver Lake, will go into the local schools' budgets, but the towns really won't see that much of a difference when you net it out. It's unlikely that we will net out at the same number for whatever we're doing with respect to the special ed programs, because there's likely going to be some additional incremental costs there. But that's something that we need the time to figure out this spring and summer so that we can walk into the fall with an idea of what those costs are, socialize that, come up with an agreement to figure out how to do that well ahead of the budget process for next year, because it will impact the members in the budget. Anything else I'm missing?
No, that's a good overview.
Comments?
So my decisions are going to be based on the best interest of the students of Plumbton and providing them with the best education possible, regardless if it's here at the Denny Ed or in a in-district out-of-district placement, whatever we want to call it. DESI will not allow us to have a collaborative-like structure for special ed programs?
When we brought up the idea in the session with the Department of Education, they were okay with the idea of pre-K because it was an entire grade level. They were not okay with parsing out just special education programs and assigning them to Silver Lake. That felt a little more complicated to them from a civil rights perspective, kind of a segregation, potentially a segregation issue. I think they saw it legally as a much bigger issue to overcome. But the question of collaborative or creating a collaborative was not discussed. So I don't know what that would look like legally to structure that.
I kind of think of it, I mean, in my head, it's the same thing. I mean, I guess there's, you know, maybe there's different paperwork, certainly, but you know, that, I think, was sort of the thinking. You would just take a program.
The problem with the collaborative approach, while it may -- it's really the approach that we're doing right now. The problem is, is the staffing. So if you have a collaborative that's renting space in your school, they are a separate financial entity. And what's happening right now are those programs are reliant upon staff members. These programs are going to need to have independent staff, even as a collaborative.
And independent space?
Not necessarily. They can rent space from Kingston or any of the schools.
But the staff has to fall under one of the three towns' budget, and then the other two towns would do an in-district out-of-district type placement?
Well, that's the -- that's one --
It's one possible option.
Possible option that's being explored is to put that.
And that's a pretty clean option.
Yeah, well, on paper. There's a lot of --
I need to say it, but staff in this circumstance is not my priority or my main concern.
No, I understand that.
It's what do we do with our kids who need these services?
Well, and let's level set. I mean, the delta between out-of-district and in-district placement is significant. And even if we have an incremental cost increase as a result, we're still going to have a significant savings. The other alternative is, you say, which is not a good choice for our students. The other alternative is, well, we just need to use the other resources that are there, and we stop doing it, which I'm totally against, because anything we can do to keep the students with students that they will be part of, you know, like, if a Plumbton student was in a Kingston thing, at some point, they're likely going to be in the middle or high school, and they're with the same students. Whereas if they're out at one of the other collaboratives elsewhere on the South Shore, it's a small group of kids, and it just doesn't give that same level of bonding. So I mean, there's that option. I guess the only thing that I have -- well, I have lots of concerns, but I guess one of the big things I have a concern with is if we get to the end of the summer and we pursue that option and we run into roadblocks that we can't solve, then where are we? You know, so maybe we need to push a little more on -- no, no, we're not just taking it into Silver Lake, but what if Silver Lake set up a sort of separate entity that could do that? And I know there's going to be incremental other costs associated with that.
So my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Christine, that the Department of Education is not entertaining this continuing on in the format that it is, that we either have to fully regionalize or it has to be taken in as one of the schools.
Into one of the independent elementary school departments.
And then tuitioned out to the other schools. That's -- those are the two ways that they have basically put on the table for us.
And, I mean --
So that presents issues for the schools that are taking in these programs.
I know this is completely hypothetical. So technically, we could all decide we want to take on the management of this, but we could rent the space from Kingston, and it would be part of the Plumbton School Committee's oversight. And then they would have to pay the tuition if they sent kids to our program.
Technically.
Technically?
It could be Halifax, could be Kingston. I mean, I think Kingston has a separate issue in that we have been, for a number of years, relying on Kingston staff, not Silver Lake staff, but Kingston staff to do some coverage and to also for the other stuff, administration, nurse, school psychologist, stuff like that. And so there's some challenges there.
Right, of course.
And those challenges wouldn't go away if Plumbton did it, for instance. Those challenges would still be there. But I think we're going to have -- so I think what you're sort of suggesting is that we may have to look at other options if we run into, like, if one's -- if one's school doesn't want to do or can't find an agreement, because the other challenge you have is you have all the staff that's part of the special ed program that would need to be absorbed into whatever union that they were attached to with the school. And how that would all work from a negotiations perspective. And if you were to follow the path of regionalization, you'd go down, and half of our budget, more than half of our town's budget, would end up going into the region.
I'm not interested in that discussion at this moment. Not a little bit.
And that's the problem here, is that we have, and I'm not sure that the townspeople would be interested in it either. And so you have two solutions, both of which are -- they aren't even uphill climbs, they're mountain climbs, like Mount Everest-type climbs.
Right.
I don't think these are good solutions.
And the other issue is, is that this affects how our grant funding is calculated. So in addition, we have, in addition to our own housekeeping and decision-making, all of these things will ultimately be assessed back to the towns in terms of, you know, grants and things of that nature for the following school year. So it also impacts us in other ways that are less than obvious.
Of course. Why wouldn't -- why would it be simple? Okay. And you thought we just had a budget to talk about today? Jeez. All right. So plenty more to come on that.
I'm just a little surprised that DESI isn't working harder to make what we have work, considering it's right and good for kids.
So I --
I just think they would get a little creative and be more interested in trying to make it work.
I think, based on our discussions, I think they're -- they do not agree that this hybrid regionalization model that we have is the best or most efficient way to provide students
-- Coming from the Office of Civil Rights.
What's that?
Is it a lot -- is it mostly financial or is it mostly civil rights?
Well, I think this is just about accounting.
I think it's financial and student reporting.
Yes.
It's numbers?
Right.
Oh, God love them.
Yeah. I think they want us to fit into one of their prescribed models, and we don't. That's not what works best.
I'm going to start growling. Sorry.
We already tried that.
I'm sure we did.
So at our next meeting with DESI, we've asked our school committee chair from each of our schools to sit in on that meeting so that they have some more firsthand knowledge about what we've --
Am I going to be instructed to be quiet?
No, you can ask them whatever questions you have. But again, we've been working on this since the fall. So --
I mean, I hope I'm wrong, but I have a distinct feeling we're going to be about September, and we are not going to have a solution. And I'm not sure how DESI can make us have one. That's the problem. I mean, you can't --
I think the financial incentive is the problem. So the financial incentive is getting your grants in the right places to the right -- for the accounting to be accurate. I think our incentive is the fact that we are -- we need the appropriate staff hired for the appropriate district. Otherwise, we have management issues. So I think there are, unfortunately, incentives that we don't like, but nonetheless, we'll come to bear and force our hands to make decisions to the best of our ability.
And I mean, and I do think there's two separate issues here. One is DESI's accounting issue, and the second is that we haven't been paying the full price. So, you know, that I -- regardless, even if we were to grab a magic wand and get to do this, there would be an increase in cost, because we are not paying for some of the services that we are utilizing for our students in these programs. Period. And that needs to be addressed, same with the other positions that we realize were not properly shared cost. That's a no-brainer.
So just to be careful, too, everybody's paying a cost. It's just, it's not as --
Well, yeah, but --
As appropriately divided as, or we don't have the appropriate staffing for that district in that program. We have appropriate staffing, but they're not as --
Yeah, yeah, but, I mean, Kingston is footing the bill for certain extra work for this program. They're not being compensated for. The people are doing the work, and they're doing it because there are students in their buildings, and they would not neglect any student in their building. But we're not -- we in Halifax are not paying any percentage based on our students being in that building for administrative staff, for school psychologists, for nurses, for whatever, right? And that is something that we need to address regardless, just so that we pay the cost that we need to pay. So. Unfinished business. I have a meeting with the police chief tomorrow. I'm going to talk to him about putting the big sign up here for the dogs ahead of -- do you know when they're going to start using the fields? I have an idea on that. I can reach out. It's probably --
Soccer stats equal first.
So maybe mid-March. You can put the sign out and see if that has any impact. I'm not reading the other signs, so I'm not sure it will. But we're going to give it a try. We promised to do that, so we'll do that. Anything on the playground, other than we're --
Just, I just wanted to say thank you to Kate for working with our provider to kind of resolve some of the lingering questions and issues we had. And then for this spring, we're just going to move forward with getting the surfacing done.
Okay, getting that all set up.
Removing what's there and getting the -- totally surfacing the whole playground.
We have signed agreements. Everything is moving. I believe the gentleman came by end of last week to take a look, the project manager for Select.
Correct.
We have to, I will give, just to prove that I give credit where credit is due, I have to thank the folks at DESI for being incredibly prompt in getting us their approval. We had everything signed. We had our meeting, you know, on that Monday night, and the Selectmen did as well. We had everything signed by Tuesday. We had it to them Tuesday afternoon. We had a response back from them with a Monday holiday in between by the following Tuesday, which allowed us to move ahead with everything. And so that is up and running, and I think they're hoping to have panels installed in the back part of the building by April and get that up and running. And hopefully, that will have some incremental impact on our costs for electricity. Again, it doesn't help with the delivery, but at least we'll get a, I think it's about two-thirds, six and change.
Wow.
So that's down from nine, right? So it's about a third, two-thirds the cost. And that would probably be on about 60, I think we averaged about 60% of our power, 60 to 65% of our power. And so that will be helpful. So I'm looking forward to getting that sorted and up and running. And I'm not sure, was this worse than the water treatment? No, water treatment was worse. So solar comes in a close second, but --
I was going to have to weigh in on that one, John.
And it was quicker. I think water treatment was five, six years?
Correct.
Okay. So that's all set. Down to standing committees, admin review?
Fairly shortly. I'm going to be talking with Jill, organizing evaluation papers to come out to all school committee members from the four different committees. Our three main charges as school committee members is the budget policy and evaluation of the superintendent. So this is one of the most sacred jobs we have. MASE is putting on a learning lunch in a couple weeks on a Friday at noon about the evaluation process. And if that's inconvenient, they have the recording from last year's session up that just walks you through the steps and how to fill it out. Obviously, if anybody ever has any questions, I'm more than happy to help them out with that process as well. So stay tuned. That should be coming out fairly soon so we can have a formal meeting and a consensus evaluation from the superintendent. and a consensus evaluation from the superintendent before our deadline in May.
Negotiations, we will, we are beginning negotiations both with the PTA and the aides. This is a limited negotiation just to look at cost of living increases for the next two years of the contract. We settled the contract last year, but we only put in one year, we put a floor in for the second and third years. Since things were kind of unsettled, we weren't sure where they were all going, so that we will be having discussions on coming up in March. Union 31, never had so much fun in my life. We ended up with two meetings there, and it's all a blur, but we had a number of shared cost contracts to evaluate. We had, what else did we do at all? As I said, it's a complete blur. It was the shared cost contracts, which was a lot of it.
The shared cost budget.
Shared cost budget, true. We had to actually get the budget so that could roll into our budget tonight.
Update on school start time?
School start time, which that has been put on hold. And, yeah, we had like eight items in the first meeting, we got through most of one. So we had a follow-up meeting and we soldiered through.
Float nurse.
Oh, the float nurse, yep. So, next one in April, I believe, right?
April 13th.
April 13th, okay. I know Dan isn't here yet. I know they had a lengthy PAC meeting a couple weeks ago to address the letter that had come in on the school committee, and I guess that was resolved satisfactorily. There was a good, long discussion of that. I don't have any other updates from him. Capital improvement. Peter, Matt and I met a week or two ago to just kind of talk through some of the items that we need to think about for the year ahead. As we discussed at our last meeting, there is no excess funds this year to fund our own capital improvement. As a result, we have to think about things a little bit differently. One of the items that we did agree that we'll be putting a warrant article on town meeting will be for the classroom floors. At least two, maybe three classrooms will get done on that. We also have to, Matt was gonna go back and reevaluate what we need to do on the roof for the units on the roof, and we'll be possibly considering doing some or all of those from utilizing ARPA funds with that. So there's more to come there. We are going to proceed with a infrared imaging of the roof, all 40-some thousand square feet of it, and we're gonna do that with some Town Properties Committee administrative funds. What that will get us is an understanding of whether we can, basically, I'm using the wrong terms, you can correct me, whether we can resurface the roof, basically is what you do. You put another coating on top, which gets you 20, 25 years' life on it, or whether it will have to be a full replacement. We are hoping on the former, not the latter, because there's a pretty significant difference in cost, probably like 700, 800,000 to do a full resurface versus probably at this point, our estimate is from four-plus years ago, and that was 1.6 then, so it's probably two and change, or two and a half million at this point. So if we can do this, we need to do this piece to understand what we can and can't do so that we can put that out into the budget processing and planning, because that will be a big chunk of money from the town to have to deal with that. I think those are the big items. Right, Peter?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Legislative?
So, speaking of special ed, we have in district special ed, where kids are surfaced right here in Denet, and we have the programs we were just discussing where we try and keep them as close to home as possible in Silver Lakes Care. And Dan represents us at the collaborative, which is another layer of the special ed world that we can reach out to when we don't have the capability of fulfilling the needs of a student in district. But there's also private schools for special ed services, and typically, the state governs how much they can raise their tuition by. And we've seen 3%, 4% increases for the past 10, 15 years. But the office that oversees the private special ed schools approved a 14% hike in their tuitions for FY '24. So we can't discuss individual students, but if we have students in private special ed schools, we're gonna see quite an increase in the cost for those students for next year. The good news is, House One comes out on Wednesday, but the governor put out some of the key points of her budget a little bit early so we could look at them. Top line, it looks like we're getting another $40,000 net of receipts in Chapter 70 for next year after our extraordinary jump that we had last year. Special Ed Circuit Breaker is fully funded already, this first version of the budget for the year at 75%. But she also included four times more dollars for extraordinary relief, which is not paid back for the year that's already gone by. We can access those funds in the year that we're encumbering those expenses. So that's a huge boom if we have any significant special ed costs next year that we'll be able to reach towards those dollars. I'm sure it's gonna be highly competitive with other districts also dealing with this huge increase in private special ed costs. It seems like her focus was really on transportation. I know it doesn't affect us here, but regional transportation is gonna be funded at 90%. Non-resident pupil transportation for vocational schools is being funded at 90%, up from 5%. And homeless student transportation will be fully covered at 100% again next year. So this is the first inning of a nine-ending marathon to figure out what the budget for the state is. We probably won't have it in by July 1st, but it's looking really good for schools as a whole so far. Still pushing for $100 per pupil minimum increment, looking at realizing some incremental cost increases to be tied to the inflationary numbers that we've seen over the past year. And a big one for us is, we did talk about how Kathy Lenatra was filing legislation for us for increasing the special ed reserve fund from 2% to 5%, and we have an actual docket number now. It's been filed as HD 1419. So this would again allow municipalities to establish a special ed reserve fund of up to 5% of the net school spending in case they ever face extraordinary special ed costs. We're at the cusp of that here locally. Hopefully, we can figure out how to solve our problems without tapping into that fund, but again, it kind of highlights the importance of having these dollars set aside for a real rainy day, especially when the town doesn't have any reserve funds of its own to be able to help us out of the situation. So appreciate Rep. Lenatra's assistance on that, but now we gotta get it passed.
Seems like that shouldn't be too hard, but, you know...
It doesn't cost anybody else any money. It's your own money that you're allowed to set aside for a rainy day.
In all of the discussions that you have, you know, in these different spaces, will there ever be the appetite to stop with this moving money around thing and just having the state deal with special ed so you're not having students move district to district? Because that's what causes the great disruption. I mean, the student still needs the schooling, and is still usually getting the schooling, it's just that it bounces around if they, you know...
So we have had that discussion several times, that special ed is the unifier of all school districts across the state. Like, when we find assistance in special ed, it helps urban schools, it helps rural schools, it helps suburban schools, wealthy districts and poorer districts, all the boats rise together when special ed's addressed. We are still advocating right now for it to be a 90% reimbursement at three times the foundation number. Right now, we're at four times the foundation budget, and we get 75%. The legislature pushes back at us every time we ask them to take on special ed at 100% because they want us financially invested in making appropriate decisions. So I don't think we'll ever get to 100, but we're trying to get much closer to that than where we are today.
Which would then help lessen the impact...
So there are several bills that are trying to address the reformulation, and the superintendents, the school business administrators, the education collaborative leaders, and the school committee associations, all of us are pushing in the same direction on those bills.
SEL Working Group?
So I can speak to that. So we had our first meeting about a month or so ago, went really well. So Jason's on that, Ms. Schofield is on that. We also have Mrs. Britter, who's our Title I teacher and a parent, and Mrs. Louise, who's a parent. So we just had one meeting so far, but we really started looking at some of the other examples of PBIS that were available to us and starting to kind of formulate and think about a framework that may work for the Denet. There's a lot of sort of different options, and, you know, I think we have to figure out what's gonna work best for our building. But I think we're off to a good start. We have another meeting coming up on March 2nd, I believe, but I think we're pretty committed, we're excited about where we think it can go.
I was very happy to be included in the group, and I was thrilled to hear the discussion and how to make it Denet, right? Really capture the essence of the culture of the school and the town and what's gonna work here for the teachers and especially for the kids, to build that consistency from K to 6, you know, and some of the expectations and the content spaces and the language that's being used amongst classrooms. So it was a very exciting conversation.
Anything else to add on policy?
Thanks.
All right. Why don't we go just, Peter, we'll go to you for the principal's report?
Certainly, thanks, John. Our enrollment stands at 240 students right now. As I reported last month, we've had nobody apply for the upcoming school psych position, which I know is a problem in many districts right now. I had three people interview for the building substitute position, and all three took other jobs. So again, we're facing some shortage there. On a more positive note, this week we're celebrating Read Across America Week with a different theme every day, and this always gets the kids fired up and most of the adults too, which is good. We have our literacy night Wednesday night at 6 o'clock. I did wanna bring to the attention of the committee that I received a $1,000 donation, and that needed to be approved by the committee, and that party wishes to remain anonymous.
Any indication of how they'd like you to spend it, or is it principal's discretion?
It was very much principal's discretion. Whatever the kids need, was the exact quote.
Motion to accept with gratitude the donation of $1,000.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I figured I'd end on some happy news. Mrs. Olet had her baby, Lady B, on Valentine's Day, and mom and baby are doing well.
Excellent. All right, Christine.
Thank you.
We didn't, do we have any single signature warrants?
We did not, but I was gonna update that we do have seven warrants circulating tonight, totaling $133,938.83. But no, we didn't have anything since the last meeting for a single signature. On the financial, it's in your package tonight, your electronic package. Really haven't been many changes there, other than, no, there haven't been too many changes. Just a couple of the areas that we've looked at before, special education tuition stands at a deficit of $183,000. That's before the use of Circuit Breaker. If we use all of the Circuit Breaker in this year, we're down to about $131,000. So there'll be a deficit of approximately $132,000. And then transportation, we currently have a deficit also of $26,000. But we did receive some Circuit Breaker funds throughout this current year, and that'll reduce the deficit to $20,000 there. The total deficit of special education will be $152,000 after the use of all of our Circuit Breaker funds that are in this current year. And I think I had mentioned last month that our special education department has done a rough estimate of what extraordinary relief reimbursement might look like, and as of right now, that looks like it's approximately $16,200. And the submission period is coming up, it's due by the end of March, and they're already starting to have their workshops with the calculations of that. But this is a rough estimate based on prior year's work that's done to compile that information.
I'll, we'll connect after and we'll set some time up. I wanted to sit down ahead of the finance committee meeting, because the first one that we'll end up having, we'll be talking about more of the special town meeting and how we're gonna, and I wanna give them the various options and levers that we can pull or not pull and let them. I did have a chat with the current chair of the FinCom the other week, and I think they'd appreciate being able to sync that through because...
The different options?
Yeah, because I think there's, she did seem to realize the concern of, you know, oh, well, make us all kind of go away, and then next year we're, you know...
What do we do?
We're out in the cold without a jacket, right? I mean, and so I think we wanna be thoughtful about the levers that we pull or don't pull, and then what we look for for funding, and they can do that as part of the process in thinking about what funds they do have available. So that will be our, that'll be the next step, so we'll find some time to just walk through all of that.
And then based on that, you actually, last month, you had asked about what had we refunded to the town in the past five or six years, and I did include that in your package tonight. And I looked at not only what we returned to the town each year, but also the transfers that were done prior to that happening. So if you look at the spreadsheet, it starts on left-hand side with the most current year, broken down by the three budget lines that the town votes. And in FY '22, we returned a total of $108,000 to the town between those lines. But before that, we did make some adjustments between our regular day and special education and vocational, and we were able to accomplish some significant projects of maintaining the building, maintaining the facilities...
And so the adjustments are not included in that final...
This balance is after the adjustments have happened, so this is, when we closed out, this is what we closed out at.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify on that.
Yeah, and then down below, I did mention if we moved the funds from anywhere other than our budget lines. So down below, you'll see the special education stabilization fund, money was moved there during many, all of those years.
Right.
And then one year, the water treatment plant. We set money aside towards the water treatment plant. So if you have any questions on that, please let me know, but that's just kind of a summary of where we've been.
I think, yeah, and we'll talk to the FinCom too about adding to the special ed reserve fund again this year, even though we don't have any money to add to it. So, because I think, because our budget's gonna go up pretty significantly, so there would be a decent jump there, but we'll see. Okay.
I made a motion to accept Christine's financial report.
One second. Second. All right, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Okay. You're up, sir.
Thank you. Just have a quick update on, for curriculum instruction assessment, on the implementation of collaborative classroom, which is the K through 5 literacy program that was implemented this year here at Denet and across the district. So in January, we had Rebecca Denny, the consultant from Collaborative Literacy, here for half the day at Denet, worked with some teachers in the afternoon, specifically around at grade two, and also around the SIPs intervention program at the kindergarten level. And then on that Thursday, January 26th, spent some administrative time with the leadership team here. That's been helpful in supporting teachers in that transition. Teachers have been working really hard to adapt to the new program, which involves a little bit more small group instruction and focus on the science of reading. We know we have to continue to sort of develop assessments that align with our new program, but we're excited about its better alignment with the Massachusetts State Frameworks K5. We will continue to support teachers by having a little bit more support in May with Rebecca Denny, who is our consultant, and also sort of building the capacity of our district leaders by providing some time for people to work together on that. We also have some professional development time coming up next week on March 9th, for teachers to work together with a focus on writing at the elementary level. So I just wanted to provide that quick update on collaborative classroom and the work's been going forward with that, and obviously Melissa Farrell and our administrators have been working hard on that, so I wanna thank them as well. Lastly, just one quick note, a year ago, we talked a little bit about the DESI, we did our tiered focus monitoring for our EL, our English learner program. We have completed our seven submissions in the areas in which... the areas in which we were being monitored, which means we had to improve some of our record-keeping and reporting and our, our program placement. We have heard back from them that we are in full compliance. And Joe O'Neill, O'Neill from KES and works with our students here at Denet, who may need EL support. And I just want to thank him and Cheryl Key for their assistance in ensuring that our program complies with federal and state regulations for English learners. So we're in, we're in good shape. That's all I have for curriculum instruction assessment.
What do they call coordinated program reviews now?
TFM.
Yes, tiered focused monitoring.
TFM?
They have their own portal where you submit things and...
I know that's an arduous process to go through. You did a really good job making sure that you showed the state that we're doing right by the kids. So I appreciate that, right?
Thank you. Appreciate everybody's help in pulling everything together.
All right.
Okay. So the first thing I wanted to mention is that the Department of Education recently made the 2022 school report cards available, and principals sent out letters to families last week. Those report cards are available on our websites as well. They are connected with our, with the accountability system and the different features of our schools that the state is also required to report out on. Thank you to Matt Durkey. After our conversation at the last meeting regarding the radios and the grant repeater, Matt has filed and submitted a grant for the radios and repeater project as we discussed. We will keep you posted to see if that project is, is supported. And the other thing I wanted to mention to you, the owl camera. In our last meeting, we discussed the budget freeze. One of the things we'd like to propose is the school committee had requested an owl camera, perhaps using the ESR funds for that use.
Yeah, I make a motion to allow the administration to use ESR funds to go after the owl.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye.
In your packet, you'll see several charts. So the first one...
Can I just mention something based on what you just brought up, owl cam and the ESR funds?
Yep.
So the governor's press release about her budget was a little bit nebulous about some language changes that the state's going to be putting into this year's budget to lessen restrictions on ESR dollars from the state perspective, to allow school districts to spend down those monies before they sunset in a more fluid way. So when we get more information, I'll pass it on to you.
Thank you. So there are several charts in your electronic folder with relation to students attending private parochial charter, charter and school choice. So the first one, if you open up the K through six, students attending private parochial and charter schools, you'll notice that the towns are sorted by, they are color-coded. And Plimpton, in terms of its total, has gone down since 2021, of an all-time high of seven students, down to two students this year in 2023. Overall, the total number of students from all of our communities attending private parochial and charter schools is actually up by 12, but Plimpton's numbers are down. The second chart is K through six students attending private and parochial schools separated out from K through six students attending charter schools. And again, if you look at the number of students in Plimpton attending private schools, that's consistent from last year at three students, an all-time high in 2021 of seven students attending private school. The number of students attending charter schools in Plimpton rose by two students this year. For several years, we did not have students attending a charter school. We have two students currently attending charter schools. Then if you look at students leaving the district for school choice, overall, we are down among our communities. Plimpton has been relatively stable with one student using school choice over the past few years.
Are these our charts, or are these the state's?
These are ours. Karen put them together based upon the data from the Sims and data collected by Ann Smith. She collects private school data from the community.
My editorial comment is we should keep the colors the same chart to chart.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that changed. But we can...
I figured it out, so, you know, we're okay.
Yep. Yeah, Plimpton's red on this, this last one.
Instead of orange.
We can put in that request. We should be able to pull that one off for you.
It's the fine details.
The next item is version two is in your, the version two budget is in your packet as well. And Christine has taken a deduction. We received news from Steve Pell that we're able to reduce by 10,000 net change.
12,000.
12,000. 12,000 because of E-rate. And she also added the shared cost budget, the percentage for, for Plimpton. So if you notice, those are the only changes made to this budget. Regular day is at 3.13%. Special education is at 22.24%, bringing our total budget to an increase of 8.56% for fiscal year '24.
Okay. So, so what changed in the technology budget?
Steve had applied for an additional...
Very tight with his money, but I just...
It's an additional E-rate related grant.
Okay.
And he did receive that for Plimpton, and it's specifically targeted towards certain types of hardware. And so he was able to eliminate that from the shares budget.
Okay.
It's a federal grant, and it has been increased since COVID because of the digital divide that was discovered in students who didn't have broadband access to the internet. So the feds threw extra money at internet access of all types for schools and school-related technology. So I'm glad that Steve reached out and got that grant fulfilled.
Okay. So, well, so first, thank you for having the number go down. That's sad.
I wish I had some well control.
That's sad. Which, which of these items in here have gone down and will therefore likely go up next year? Because we have, we have, we have textbooks that's way down. We have instructional, instructional software's down. We have tech is down. And on tech, I'm sorry, I'm jumping all over the place. On tech, so we're, Steve is comfortable that we have a plan to start working on, I know, isn't it strange? I'm trying to spend money when we don't have anything. But Steve is working on a plan to be able to, to start incrementing laptops, because we put all the laptops in at the same time, which then worries me down the road. Even if I'm not sitting here, it worries me down the road that all of a sudden, we're going to need to replace 25 laptops. And we need to start getting that onto a cycle so that we have as part of our budget, a regular amount of money to regularly fund equipment replacement, which is just going to, it's going to be a little different than what we've done before because we, you know, we kept the desktops going until smoke came out of them. So I'm not wrong, am I? No. Okay. So Steve's comfortable that the budget is going to meet that and that we have a plan going forward, year to year, to...
And with the funding he's received, it will carry over for the next several years. So it's not just a one time.
Okay.
He said it would, for the next several years, it will eliminate the need for those purchases because of the E-rate funds to do that.
Okay.
Yeah. I had the similar concerns, though, because when I took out special ed, the increase in the budget was a two, which is a very low number. And I know Peter always comes to us with a very modest budget and runs a tight ship. But I was equally concerned, so.
But I guess I want to make sure that I highlight when we talk with the finance committee, you know, we, we have, you know, 22% increase in special ed, which therefore puts a big increase in the overall budget. But are there certain areas where, because of grants or because of timing, like I assume textbooks is because we're kind of in between?
Yes.
I want to highlight, I want to highlight any of the down areas to just make sure that next year, when you go in front of FinCon, they're not going to say, oh, well, why are these up 25, 40%? And so I would assume, even with the grant, I would assume technology is just, it's, it's down, but it's likely to go up. And I assume it's textbooks.
One thing I did want to mention, when Jason mentioned the OSD, Operational Services Division approving a 14% increase, we did build that into the budget. That's built in, that's already been built into the tuition rate increases.
Okay. Oh, okay.
That's a, that's a good thing.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That was Horvix.
Yeah.
The 22% increase in special ed, that's just a real time increase that we're seeing now, correct? Because depending on what, I don't know, comes to fruition with DESI and the program, that expected to go up.
It has nothing to do with that. But what it...
But like down the line.
But what it does have to do with, it has to do with any students that you think either are or may be in programs as of this snapshot.
And it has to do with what we're seeing in this current year. We were having, we had some significant events happen this current year, so that's impacting this year as well as next year.
It's the, it's what, based on the crystal balls and tea leaves that are available, it is the expected budget for next year, all in.
Okay.
The year after could be something entirely different, one based on whatever increases come for different placement programs, whatever increases we might have to do for in district programs, whatever increases we might have to do to adjust staffing and putting them in the right buckets. But this isn't just sort of only, well, this is everyone it's in. It's also including some work that's going on right now in school, such that we expect a student or two to go elsewhere. That, that's already budgeted in, both in what we need for this year to cover, but also for next year. Now, that could change dramatically by September, depending on students moving in or out of district or other needs becoming where. But...
Another reason why it would be smart to hold back on the special ed stabilization fund in case we need it.
Yeah. Okay.
That's a good point, though.
But so, but that fourth...
What the cost change might be when DESI finally says this is how you have to rearrange programs.
Yeah.
Good point.
And the, the textbook programs that includes the subscriptions, or are the subscriptions somewhere else?
So some of the subscriptions will be under instructional software, because a lot of them are online.
But like that one went down, too. See, that's what, I shouldn't be bothered that things are going down, but it, nothing goes down, so.
Yes, and in part, sometimes...
Is it sometimes just what's due?
Sometimes that can reflect a startup fee that was more expensive with the initial adoption of something. Sometimes that can reflect a program that isn't being continued because it wasn't as, as useful as something else that is being used. And it could also be that some of these things are going to be funded through grant, like Title I, where possible. So...
But it, but so, so the three areas that we have significant decreases percentage-wise, some of them's only a couple thousand dollars, but are tech, textbooks, and instructional software. And we cannot guarantee that that would, that that's going to carry over to another year where it wouldn't go back up again, because it depends on the ebb and flow of what textbooks we're replacing or what additional fees that we're paying. So I just want to highlight those to FinCon that, you know, we're able to take some of that savings now, and that because of the tech grant, that takes off a decent chunk. And therefore, we're down to really 8.56 instead of, we were nine, high nines last time, I think. So and then there's still a lever in here that, you know, should they want to take it, I'm going to suggest not. But there's still a lever that we are, we're budgeting for two and a little bit for vote.
Two-ish students.
Two-ish. Thank you. So, you know, we still have till April 1st for them to sign up.
Right.
But not having some sort of, I mean, that, not having some sort of buffer in the budget makes it difficult when things don't go the way they're supposed to.
We do have one student that's applying for next year.
We do have a student that's applying. Okay, so that really can't change at all. So we only have half of that as a buffer. Okay. That's good to know. Any other questions with the budget?
I think, aside from the uncontrolled cost that special ed presents to us, it's an extremely tight, reasonable, responsible budget. And as difficult as it might be for people to understand an 8.5% increase in a budget, I think it's incumbent upon us as the school committee to explain it to our fellow citizens of the town and, you know, really highlight the areas that were within the control of Pete and his team. They brought us a 2% budget, you know, and these numbers that we're seeing with special ed, we always knew that this day would come to them.
Well, let's just, let's just look at the math a little bit, just running back five years here. You know, in, in the 2019, 2020, we were at 470,000, which is 60,000 or 50,000 less than what we had this year budgeted. So, and that was the lowest year, you know, except for this year. The last, the two years prior to this year, we were at about 545,000. So if that budget had been maintained, this year's increase would have been much smaller. But we went from 417 to 625. That, I mean, you just, so we got the benefit last year, which is why we delivered a zero budget, net zero budget to the town. And unfortunately, because we have the increase, it's just, it's compounded itself. So if you look at the average, it's really not a, it's not as, as great of an increase as, as you would see. It's just that we had a really low year last year, and that, we thought we were going to have a really low year, because we didn't, because we're going to need money to supplement that. But that's part of, part of that increase. The other thing, Christine, is it possible, can we put on here, you know, sort of at the, at the end, you know, where we come up with the final numbers, can we put on the, is it chapter 70? Because that money comes, that's not in the, that's not in the budget.
That goes directly to the town.
So can we, I would like that, if we can, put on at the end, because that's going to change, so that extra 40,000 that Jason was referencing is going to change the actual, the actual increase. Because that's what we talked about. Because last year, we had a two and change budget when we looked at this, but when you took out the chapter 70, it was zero.
I went, I checked today, and the increase from last year to this year, with all the ups and downs, is $52,986 in chapter 78 to Plimpton for this year. So you'd like to see each of the years that are included on the schedule, having the chapter 70 included?
No, I was, I was thinking on the, on the budget that we're going to give to FinCon. I'd like to show them that, you know, that, I'd like to show them the, this is like the gross number, right? This is our gross number. It's not netted out of chapter 70. I'd love to be able to show them a chapter estimate.
So a schedule of chapter 70 for each of those years?
Yeah, and what we're projecting for, we're projecting for this budget year.
Yeah, that's what I did see, that right now, based on the information that we have, it would be an increase of just under 53,000 in chapter 78.
Yeah. But like, but that means that our actual percentage increase is not 8.56 net to the town.
Right.
I'd like to see that number, because it's important.
Yeah. And I came up with my 40, remember, Christine, because I took into account the charges of...
Yeah, I did too. That's what I always have to do. I do all the, it was chapter 70 plus charter school reimbursement.
Minus.
And then the last, school choice sending tuition and charter school sending tuition. And that's where I came with 52.
Yeah, my number was close to that, but I didn't want to say that on purpose. I was wrong, which is why I rounded it to 40.
You were safe.
I've learned from watching you.
Caution, caution, being cautious is the good thing.
Okay. So I guess the question then is, do we want to vote the budget, or do we want to vote it at the next meeting after we've had a discussion with FinCon?
We can always take it back if we decide there's anything.
I brought the budget votes with me.
All right.
If you choose to.
I don't think, I don't think there's anything in here we can ask.
Do you have a copy of your, your, I don't know, you don't want me to fill it in for you? I didn't, I didn't fill in the numbers, just in case.
So we just need to do the three numbers?
Yep. I can do that, though.
All right.
I have the budget over here.
Oh, do you?
Yep.
I'll give you the sheet then. I'll give you the sheet then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Much thanks, Christine. Does the other district, do I have to put together the transportation and the tuition numbers?
No, because Plimpton votes the whole special education as one.
Yep, but the vocational one?
Oh, they vote just the one number of 60,000.
60,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, so combine them.
Yes.
All right, let's do that one first. I make a motion that the Plimpton School Committee approve the 2023-2024 Elementary School Added District Vocational Education Budget of $60,000.
I have a second. All in favor? Aye.
And is the special ed one? What line is that?
On the summary page, it's on page two of the summary.
1, 3, 8, 8.
$1,388,000.
6, 4, 4.
There we go. Okay. So I make a motion that the Plimpton School Committee approve the 2023-2024 Elementary School Special Education Budget of $1,388,684.
I have a second. All in favor? Aye.
And the regular day is the 28, 54?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion that the Plimpton School Committee approve the 2023-2024 Elementary School Operating Budget of $2,854,051 as the amount deemed necessary for the operation of the regular day.
I have a second.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, our first budget vote.
So my last item is the school committee agenda, school committee meetings for next year. Karen attempted to stay within the same date range as last year to the extent possible. You'll notice May 28th would be a Tuesday, not our traditional Monday, so she highlighted that in yellow. And then the joint committee meetings, one in November, where we typically have budget presentations, one in February, where we typically discuss shared cost budget, and then one in April, where we discuss district-wide goals. So that if those dates look acceptable, we'd look for a discussion and possible vote.
I guess the only question is, is this is maybe more of something for Silver Lake to think about, is that we had no success getting through our shared cost discussion in February, in February this year. My guess is it won't be any different next year. And so. So either maybe not have their budget hearing at 6:00, or maybe we should have it on a separate day.
Yeah, I think.
An hour's not going to be enough.
I think it might be easier to change the joint school committee meetings than to change the Silver Lake rotation.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, and I don't know if April is as big of a deal, but that February 1, it just, I mean, we went for another two hours. So it's a three-hour meeting. It's a full night's meeting. We can't put two in a night, so.
We can give them a different, we can resubmit this to each of the school committees with a new February date. Even the committees that have voted it, we can ask for just an amendment to the calendar.
We don't have Halloween this year, so I think that's good. I don't have any problems with the calendar.
Will we need a joint meeting for the evaluation in May, or will we try and get that done in April 24?
Last year, we tried to do it in April.
Right.
It was hard.
I know it was.
So we can, we can add an additional.
Yeah. Just going on. Yeah, we'll play it by ear.
Okay.
Okay, so, I mean, I'll make a motion to accept the Plimpton School Committee meeting schedule and joint school committee schedule, understanding that we will look for an alternate date in February.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And did you, did you already vote the school?
Calendar?
Calendar.
I thought we did.
Okay.
The first ones.
Yes, I think you were. Okay, just wanted to. Thank you, everyone.
All right. So I think all we need is motion.
So I make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to regular session under chapter 30A, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting had a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair, so declares, for the Plimpton teachers and their profession, and pursuant to MGL chapter 30A, section 21A7, to comply with their act under the authority of any general or specific law for the approval of the executive session minutes of January 23, 22, 23.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you, everyone. Thanks for coming.